I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public religious fans, one nation, one God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, welcome back. Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Supervisor Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Iasili.
Here.
Councilman Pell.
Present.
Councilman Scavoni.
Present.
All right, let's start with our review of the draft agenda. We've got five public hearings that'll be coming up next week. One is to consider amending town code 330-10B8 to correct a typographical error in the table of use regulations as it relates to schools for the intellectually disabled. The second public hearing is for a deed of dedication of open space in connection with the final conditional approval of the Rockland Dynasty subdivision in the hamlet of Watermill. The third public hearing is to consider amending Southampton Town Code, Chapter 298, to amend Article 8 to authorize an exemption for the creation of new accessory dwelling units within the town. The fourth public hearing is to consider amending Town Code, Chapter 312, to amend parking time, limited and designated locations regulations, and adding parking prohibited in designated locations regulations on a portion of Corwith Avenue in Great Hampton. The fourth public hearing is to consider amending Town Code 330-210 of Article 22 as it relates to the placement of signs.
Public hearing number one, it says to correct a typographical error. It's actually a change in the name. It's not a typo. You know, we changed from an antiquated name to for schools for intellectually disabled. So if we could drop typographical error or to change a name on that, that would be appreciated.
To revise or update the language?
We can't? Okay. That's fine. We'll do it in the public hearing and make sure that people know it's, we want it to move forward.
But that's a good point.
Mm-hmm. And we will make it. Okay.
Okay, so let's go ahead with the resolution reviews.
Hey Jim, this first one, is this supposed to be tabled?
Yeah.
The first one?
Yeah. Town Board Resolution 2024-1068, I will table that again.
Okay.
For a work session or something?
Yeah.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47274, to authorize purchases and installation fencing with residential fences corp using Suffolk County contract and Eastern Suffolk Bosse's contract. Town Board Reso... Oh, did I skip one?
Nope.
474.
Okay. Okay.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47374, to authorize purchases of artificial turf using Suffolk County contract with the land Tech Crew Inc. and Laser Industries Inc.
Town Board Resolution ID 47456, authorize supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean Associates Engineer and Survey DPC to provide professional engineer service for the traffic study at the intersection of Lemon Lane, at Maple Lane, and Lemon Lane at Narrow Lane in Great Hampton.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47460, to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with N. and P. Engineering Architecture and Land Surveying P. LLC to provide professional services for a traffic assessment all way stop control and Scuttle Hill Road and Cooks Lane.
Supervisor, I'd like to be a cosponsor. I brought this forward. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Town Board Resolution 47091, sponsored by the whole board, authorize supervisor to sign agreement with trustees in order to improvise trustee budget proceed of the January 1, 2025, per se to Article 107, New York State Town Law.
We're going to be reviewing?
Yes. Town Board Resolution 47518, authorize and award the 2024 Notice of Proposal for Professional Engineer Design Service for the Watermill Passage to L.K. McLean Associates Engineer and Survey. That's a fish ladder in Watermill. Town Board Resolution 47382, authorize Justice Court to apply for grant funding to support Justice Court operation through the New York State Antifa Court System of 2024 to 2025 Justice Court assisted program.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47397, to authorize the purchases of public safety communications equipment from Integrated Wireless Technologies LLC. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47396, to authorize the purchases of public safety communications equipment from Motorola Solutions, Inc. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47471, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, to authorize the supervisor to sign, to execute a contract amendment with Edward Wolpersdorff to assist with the review of backlog permit plans in the Department of Land Management. Town Board Resolution ID 47464, authorize supervisor execute a donation agreement for the installation of a fitness station at Foster Memorial in Long Beach.
I'd like to co-sponsor.
Myself too, please.
Okay.
Town Board Resolution 47485, authorize supervisor to execute agreement with James Wilson to assist the Highway Department with backlog flood inspection for the highway determined to have the new construction and monitor of the compliance of the state corp and private contractors and utility companies in project involved in the town of Southampton, Rose.
I'd like to co-sponsor that, Madam Clerk. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47500, authorizing the supervisor to execute indemnification and hold harmless letter for Riverhead Central School District for Youth Bureau After-School Program.
Town Board Resolution ID 47516, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili. Authorize the supervisor to execute any and all documents with RecTrak LLC DB Vermont Systems for their RecTrak software to manage the town's operations for parks and recreation. Should be DBA.
Yeah. Got it.
Town Board Resolution 47474, co-sponsored with Councilman Pell, to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract extension for awards of Community Preservation Fund, CPF, 20% water quality improvement project funds for the Village of Southampton.
Town Board Resolution 47493, also co-sponsored with Councilman Scavoni, authorize supervisor to sign a no-cost contract extended for the 2022 Award Community Preservation Fund, 20% water quality improvement project funds.
Page 47467.
Thirty, top of page thirty. Bill.
Well, he is right here. It's not colored anymore. Town Board Resolution 47467, also co-sponsored with Councilman Scavoni. We call amends Town Board Resolution 2024-885, authorize supervisor to sign a contract to send award Community Preservation Fund a 20% water quality improvement project fund for the Cornell Cooperative Extension.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47502, to recall and, uh, co-sponsored with Councilman Scavoni, to recall and amend Town Board Resolution 2024-937, authorizing the supervisor to execute a 2024 renewal with Bentley Systems, Inc. for the ProPureware Cloud Hosted Software Solution to manage the town's operations for bidding and contracts. That's okay, thank you. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47422, the 2024 Notice to Bidders for Heavy Duty Truck Parts Class 5-8 Trucks.
Town Board Resolution 47453, Center Prices and Contract Compliance, Notice to Bidders for Bay Drive Bulk Advertitation.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47503, the allocation of ARPA's Coronavirus Federal Grant for Waste Water Management Equipment. And I know, Bill, you wanted to just check on one thing, so you know, see if you could get that done by Tuesday?
Yes.
On the cost.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, it's the leftover ARPA money.
We want to make sure we spend it more, honestly.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47501, to amend the 2024 budget for various departments. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47392, to authorize closure of capital projects. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47394, to authorize a expenditure from restricted accounts for the Windsor Hard Project.
Town Board Resolution 4...
Wait, I got one here. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47506, to authorize the town to reimburse New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal the deductible for liability and property damage claims.
Town Board Resolution 464... Excuse me. 46730, Resolution Adoptment and Taxes and Parking Restriction on Mount Laura Lane Tucker Home.
Did we, I know we had, where did we have a... Do we have a work session and a public hearing on this?
Uh, yes. The public hearing was closed, and they got the stuff back from the county.
Oh, they did.
What was the test from the county? What does that mean? Test from the...
They just, they just looked at it. They said it was fine. Forced to put no part of it on one side, on both sides of the street going up.
The question was about Sandy Hollow Road?
Yeah.
A road that gets... Guess we'll talk about it in a minute.
They said they're not doing anything to Sandy Hollow.
No, they're not doing anything.
They're not doing anything.
Town Board Resolution 47454, Resolution Adoptment Town Code 123-25 with respect to Row Review Requirements.
Town Board Resolution ID 47387, Resolution of Adoption to Amend Sign Code 330-210.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47473, to authorize the sale of a town-owned .90 fractional pine-bearing credit.
Town Board Resolution ID 47447, waive showmobile fee for East Quack Fire Department annual seafood and beer festival, which will be this Saturday evening. Town Board Resolution ID 47345, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Hampton Bay's Fire Department Turkey Drop 5K on November 28, 2024, from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47457, to appoint a hearing officer. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47449, to appoint Sylvia Sullivan to administrative assistant position in Human Resources, fill a vacancy. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47437, to create position of accountant in the comptroller's office and appoint Tyler Wist. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47440, to appoint Matthew Mizella to environmental technician in land management, fill a vacancy. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47368, to appoint Candace Brambley to records retention manager in the town clerk's office. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47439, to appoint Marjorie Riley to senior building inspector in the building department, to fill a vacancy. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47517, to authorize municipal works director to sign a stipulation of agreement.
Town Board Resolution 47442, authorizing the Youth Bureau Director to attend the Association of New York State Youth Bureau Directors training.
Town Board Resolution 47...
We skipped one on the bottom, Maria.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47482, to terminate an employee in the Justice Court.
Town Board Resolution 47475, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, Councilmember Iasili, Notice of Public Hearing to Consider the Acquisition of 6C Squires Pond Road in the Hamlet of Hampton Bay's and to amend the CPF Project Plan and CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the property.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47520, co-sponsored by the entire board, to have a Notice of Public Hearing to consider the acquisition of 27 Tiana Circle in the Hamlet of Hampton Bay's and to amend the CPF Project Plan and CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47476, also co-sponsored by the entire board, for a Notice of Public Hearing to consider the acquisition of land at 65 Old Riverhead Road in the Hamlet of Hampton Bay's and to amend the CPF Project Plan and the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the property.
Town Board Resolution 47443, a Notice of Public Hearing for the proposed allocation of community development block grant funds for the year 2025.
Town Board Resolution 47508, Notice of Public Hearing to Consider Grant License Guarantee to John Dunn and West Robin Waste Company for use of the Forts of Conscious Point Arena in further backward to agriculture activity.
I'd like to co-sponsor.
I would as well, Sunday.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47451, Road Review Application for Paramount Development Group, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-377.00-01.00-018.002 and 018.003 situated at Quiog is accepted.
Town Board Resolution 47505, co-sponsored with Councilman Pell, to accept award and authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents pertaining to the New York State Consolidated Funding Grant Award for the Alwite Creek Habitat Enhancement Project.
And then there's some add-ons. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47507, to amend the 2024-2028 Capital Program and add Capital Project Poxabob Golf Center improvements.
Sunday could be added to that?
Sure.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47514, to amend the 2024-2028 Capital Budget for Hampton Bay's Water District SCADA System Upgrade Project.
Sunday could be added to that as well?
Me too.
Myself too.
Just add the whole board.
Town Board Resolution ID Number 47521, to authorize the acquisition of 867 Millstone Road in the Hamlet of New York and to amend the CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID Number 47522, to authorize the acquisition of 180 and 182 Red Creek Road in the Hamlet of Hampton Bay's, New York, and amend the CPF Management Plan and Stewardship Plan to include the property.
Can you add me to that too, please?
You're on it.
I think we're on that, yeah, the whole board's on it. And then Town Board Resolution ID Number 47525, to recall and amend Town Board Resolution 1430 of 2023 as it relates to the use of Suffolk County American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds in furtherance of the Riverside Sewer District.
I'd like to co-sponsor that one, Sunday.
The last one?
The last.
Okay. Okay, so next we have a presentation on the Dog Patch Bandits. And Kristen Dulos, our director of Parks and Rec, is here, and Drew Harvey from the Dog Patch Bandits.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, this is Drew Harvey. Drew Harvey is the principal of the Dog Patch Bandits. It's a not-for-profit organization, and I'd like to ask Drew to tell us some of the other projects that you all have been involved in. Essentially, you raise money and then give it back to the community in ways that would benefit the community, so.
Yeah, exactly. The nonprofit is, it's kind of all about fitness to support mental health is the primary objective. Like as pertains to this specific project, this equipment and the installation of this equipment, we have 11 other projects up, six of which are on Long Island. Two local public ones are at Pearson High School and at Fisk Field in Shelter Island. So it's kind of a tried and true model that the public likes. It holds up very well, and it's, it's very easy for us to install and very low maintenance on the part of the town, municipality or facility that, that has it. And for this project, you know, we're obviously teaming up with the Southampton Parks and Rec Department. We're donating it to the town of Southampton for use at Long Beach Foster Memorial Park.
And for this, a lot of our constituents who regularly walk Long Beach, they've asked for some kind of like little fitness equipment or, you know, like some things that they could stop and, you know, do other exercises besides walking. I've had a number of people request that, so this, you know, kind of fits in nicely with those requests.
Yeah, I think Long Beach is one of like the recreational centers of the town of Southampton, especially for residents of Sac Harbor, New York, North Haven, et cetera. So just having another resource for them at Long Beach, I think it's just a net positive for the public that personally applies to that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And just a little more history. Drew was actually a lifeguard for the town of Southampton and grew up in Sac Harbor area, went to Pearson High School. And I know that one of the reasons why you guys started this group was because one of our former lifeguards had some struggles and it was sort of born out of that, if I'm correct.
Yeah, former Lieutenant Mike Semkus, also a teacher at Sac Harbor Schools, passed away from a drug overdose a number of years ago. Very prominent figure in the community, you know, idol to a lot of people. And I think it's just important to push fitness to support mental health for youth coming up in the community. You know, oftentimes you hear there's, there's nothing to do, there's no resources for them. I think by opening things up, you know, we do a great job at preserving water access, encouraging swimming, ocean access, and then more fitness and outdoor recreation resources are a good way for people to channel energies and kind of get a positive outlet in the community as opposed to going down that negative path of substance abuse. Yeah, so that, that was definitely the catalyst for the founding of the nonprofit.
Yeah, and I think I agree so strongly with the synergy between mental health and physical wellness. And Long Beach is unique in that it's a mile-long stretch, continuous stretch of bayfront beach, and it has a paved parking area that runs that whole stretch, and people can be seen exercising, walking, running on a 365. So it's, it's not just a seasonal facility there. So this would be a nice element to add to that, to round out the fitness that goes on there. So what we were looking at, we had looked at a few proposed locations on the site, which you could see marked out on the upper right-hand, uh, upper left-hand, rather, location map where those actual proposed locations are. In vetting this site in person and speaking with Councilman Scavoni, who's been involved along the way, and in sending it to the New York Civic Council, we've all decided that we believe proposed location number one is the best spot for the installation. So that's our current plan. And it would...
Now, Kristen, I understand that the New York Civic Council actually got these photos and the locations, and, you know, they're intimately familiar with the area, and they vetted this themselves in their own internal processes.
Right, this exact site map was sent to them. And it will consist of a dip station and pull-up bars?
Mm-hmm, and a push-up area. And it kind of, the beauty of it is it's a designated workout area. So now you'll find people just in the middle of the parking lot doing squats or bringing some sort of equipment down. And this is a nice, it's a safe area, it's a controlled area. People can bring workout bands, and they have now a designated space to perform those workouts that they want to do.
This is also in the vicinity of a comfort station and the lifeguard office. There's also a lifeguard stand set up nearby in the summer.
And forgive me if you've already mentioned this, and this would be year-round? Or just in the summer?
Yes, yeah, so the equipment is permanently installed. So, you know, the lifespan of this is 20 years plus. It's galvanized steel, cement concrete. Very low maintenance, as I said, so this would be open to the public year-round.
Designed to stand up to the elements?
Exactly.
They get elements down there.
Yeah, and it's all school-grade equipment from the manufacturers and all installed to specifications by them. So it's kind of of the highest, like, safety grade as well. Like I said, it's installed at Pearson High School.
So this, this a talk-in lot right here?
Yes.
This is...
114.
114. And then you...
Long Beach Road, County Road 79.
Right.
Then you gotta, this, this is, I think there's a gate here now?
Correct.
So are you gonna leave the gate here up, or...
Yes. And they're actually gonna restore some, some plantings behind the fitness station just to add more buffer.
Yeah, are you gonna leave a payoff to go through here?
No, that's not the, the current plan. We had looked at doing that.
Because a lot of people walk, walk here.
Oh, you're not doing the alternate proposed location one?
Oh, you're not doing the alternate proposed location one?
No, proposed location one. There are about five or six accesses into the beach.
Yeah.
So this one.
They've been closed since twenty twenty.
Correct, yeah, we've, we've been locking those gates for the past several years except for the main access.
Yeah.
Kristin, is it, I'm sorry, you're, you're asking.
No, you go, you're in a rush, it's your thing.
Well, I, I can just, I can just.
Please continue, Councilman Pell.
You know, my, my personal recommendation when I initially got these plans was proposed location one alternate, cause I believe in pedestrian access.
Yeah, that's good to me.
But, you know, I think the, the group consensus with the input of the Noiac Civic Council was to go with proposed location one. The scope of work is the same for us. The equipment is the same. So I think part of this work session is also like if there's any overwhelming input that you guys have or questions about location one, you know, now's the time to discuss it.
So there, there are six entrances to, to Long Beach and this would be one that would be closed off. So the thought that I had, Councilman Pell, was as far as this grass area, can we restore a, a, a piece of the dune there? A concern I would have is somebody turning into this curb cut and just making a bad choice.
That's why the alternate, this number, the alternate looks good because it creates a bike path to go and I'm sure you put a bike rack at the end and then.
So this was, this was our sketch of, and like I said, like we're, proposed location one is totally fine with us. This is what we had, we just wanna pass that down. So any, any part of where the pavement is going to be cut, we've got Southampton Excavation donating all of the services for that, which is fantastic. So they're prepared to do all of that excavation work and replace it with clean sand. So there is a way in location one and location one alternate. Anywhere where the pavement is cut will be replaced with clean sand and then Summer Hill Landscaping will install dune grass plugs. So it really is also a dune grass restoration project, which I think is great. You've got quite a bit of pavement that is just sitting there that is not really gonna be used, what I've been told, so it'd be great to restore it to more of a naturalized area as well.
I like the bike path with the bike rack because I think people bike down there all the time and they could totally park their bike and do their upper body workout and then get back on their bike and continue on their merry way.
Yeah, I'm not sure why the community would have indicated otherwise, but this.
Was there a reason why they, they wanted that?
I can look back at the, the email that they sent, but there were some.
Well, cause there are five other entrances. This isn't, isn't the entrance.
But this would just be bikes.
No, I, I understand. And bikes can get in, you know, the two other entrances, which are a couple hundred yards away each on either side. So I, I'm assuming that's why they chose this, to make it a dedicated area for this purpose and just close off this one completely and not cloud the issue because it does have a curb cut and I'm, like I said, I'm kind of concerned that people might turn in with a car.
Right, and they won't do that with alternate one. They can't do that, right? So I mean, you're eliminating that risk as well.
You'd really have to choke it off, I think, cause people drive over the curb there and drive in, they drive in the other side. People will do crazy things. So if, if we were to go with this, I think it would have to be like bollards or a big rock here or something that really chokes off that entrance because.
We're, we're gonna have to have the county remove the curb cut.
That's what I was trying to say before, before I was interrupted.
Yeah.
If you could go straight across, remove the thing, have Steve from Southampton, that's gonna give you a nice big rock.
And he, and he would. So he, I've shared all of these options with Steve.
Then maybe keep this little space here, put a bench there and then have a path because I see.
A pedestrian path.
Let me get it again, narrow.
Do an hour path that way because it's a long walk and I see people sitting, you know, stretching against the rocks. I drive that road all the time. And I see, you know, actually you wanna do something nice for Fred in Fort Higgin Rest there.
But what are, is this all supposed to be grass? This dune grass replaced with little Xs?
So, yeah, so each of these options was produced by the Parks and Recreation team. So.
I mean, are people supposed to walk through the grass then to get to the exercise equipment?
No, they would have to get in from the inside of the park.
Yes.
In this option.
Ah, okay.
That's why I said leave a path.
But I do think because we're doing this work, we could have some sort of pedestrian path somehow that it's, it's safe, it's very restrictive. But I think that's kind of, that's kind of what we're talking about. We're, we're very open to what's best for the public and what the trustees want, what the council members want.
What, you're gonna put bike racket on at the end then or before the walking path?
There is.
That, that drawing is like, to me, ideal.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I will just say, I, I do like proposed location one alternate, as it is indicated. I think that it just makes more sense. I, I don't like that this is.
It's so blocky and then.
This is why we're here.
I, I don't, I also don't like that this is blocked off. I think that, you know, we wanna demonstrate that there's access. Even though we don't want people driving, there's some, I think there's things that we might be able to do. But this, this to me is, is, I don't know, and I, I'm a little, I, I would hate to go against what the civic wants too. I mean, if the civic really likes this, but I mean.
They chose after they.
It seems as though you're inviting cars to turn into that and then.
Well, you can choke this up.
Well, I would keep the gate here. I would keep the existing gate where it is.
Right, and Bill suggested a rock, I suggested a dune, you know, sand. So that, and, and then eventually go to the county and have it removed completely. And we have plenty of access to the beach. What would a bike path do to the cost of it? I mean, I don't believe that the bike path was part of your.
Well, what's interesting about it is it's actually would not increase the cost because we would just be leaving the asphalt and then actually just cutting a nice edge on it. Something that Steve Mezneski said would be relatively easy to do. But we would be putting bollards and then we would suggest making it very tight at the roadside. So it's very clearly a bike path. A car cannot.
So how would the, I'm sorry, how would the curb cut then be handled? Right, there are curbs that, that angle in from the county road. And so, and this may not be a question for you, it's more for Kristin, where we would be moving that in, is that, do we then need to bring in the county to do that work? Or can we take those curbs out and cut that, that asphalt down to size the way we want it? Which I'm fine with if we can do it.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure of the answer on that. I'd have to revisit the, the layout of how it currently is. I mean, there is an existing cut there, cause it wasn't accessed, so I don't.
Right, for a car, two cars.
Right, so I, you're suggesting that a curb would have to get installed there?
Well, the way that this shows, it, it shows that we're gonna be, we would be planting, in alternate one, we would be planting grass where concrete curbs currently exist.
Oh.
And I, I just wanted to stay away from all of that. That's why I like not alternative for location one because we can kind of keep it the way it is and then make this installation go to the county later and have that removed. But I understand the board's desire here to have a bike lane. I think it's a good idea.
I think it'd get more use because on proposed location one, only the people already on the beach could use it, but on the alternate, anybody riding their bike along the road can just pull in, use it and then continue to sit on Fred's.
Yeah, but, but like this, put a, put a big rock in the middle. Okay, then do like, like an exit ramp.
Right.
Another exit ramp here, so if they're on a bicycle, they can all walk in, they can come here for this way.
Yeah, I think, I think that's exact, you know, you would, you would link the bike path that already exists on the county road in and then out as well and have a substantial barrier where cars can't enter.
Be the, put a, you know, barrier, a big wall.
Bollard or something.
Yeah, yeah, two bollards or a rock.
Rock would go more in the same way there.
I think that's, that, I think that's a good suggestion, yeah.
You definitely wanna choke it off.
So just so everyone knows, like, we do have architects on the team, we've got licensed contractors, so I think that ability to do it all is there. We're prepared to cover the costs of it and we've got some great contractors that are willing to donate a lot of the, the services, which is huge. Which is why I definitely wanna do a contributor's plaque on, on a rock, including, you know, the town of Southampton, council members and all that, Parks and Rec, everyone that contributed to the project.
Very generous of your group to donate.
They moved this nice one. I know you do nice work.
Thank you.
I think it's great. I mean, we're doing a fitness pad, an outdoor fitness pad at the Marine Park in Hampton Bays.
Oh, very cool.
Um, and that came as a that, that suffer from sensory disorders and they can't go into a gym because it's just too overwhelming. So we thought an outside place on the canal where there's nothing really else there, so they can just go and use the equipment and, you know. It would also be obviously open to the general public for anybody to use it, but it was just geared more, that was more the thought behind it because, you know, not everybody can A, afford a gym or B, even just mentally go into a gym and deal with the stress and so, you know, we, we are doing that at Hampton Bays, so I'm fully supportive of this. Whichever iteration.
Yeah, right. What, what do you think, Tommy, Tom John, you think something that?
Just the other two locations, proposed location two was along the side of the, the, the the park and where cars go by. We thought that was a little dangerous there. And then, uh, location three was at the end on the north side. And we thought, you know, that would be like a little too far removed perhaps. And, and so when we brought it to the community, they liked proposed location one. So I, you know, if the cost, if it's not a cost issue for the alternate, I, I think that's, you know, I'm certainly fine with it.
I could work out whatever concerns there are with the curbing and.
Yeah, no, I'm just, yeah, I'm, it's a county road.
Yeah.
And it's County Road sixty, by the way.
I guess, yes, I should look into it for, commit to that, to make sure that we don't have to do anything that requires their permission.
I do like the idea of closing it off to, you know, all vehicle traffic, you know, except for bikes. You know, cause there are five other entrances to this park, two that are active.
Yeah, that was always the concern, was that people are always walking back and forth and people are flying in and out of all these various entrances.
And the walkers like the, the walkers like the traffic, uh, coming in on either side. I know that's something that we did during COVID and so, you know, we're gonna keep it that way. I think this is a good addition.
Yeah, the one thing that I would add is if you don't put, even if we go with location one, um, with the dune grass restoration, I think we should put some sort of pedestrian way because people are gonna walk to the station and they're gonna trample over the dune grass if we don't. And that's kind of what you see at those other locations. People just, they pass the gates on the side and they create their own paths. So I think it makes more sense to have a controlled access regardless for pedestrians.
Yeah, that's why I figured to have a path, cause I could see people walking.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna walk.
But this is better because if this is, if we found a lot of people using this, you might wanna come back in a few years and put something else over here.
I'd also like to revisit the comments from the Noiac Civic Council too.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking actually, maybe what the thought was, and I, I don't know, because I wasn't there, I don't know. Tommy John, if you're able to confirm this, but maybe the concern was the traffic on Long Beach Road that sometimes does get busy at, you know, during, you know, the morning and also dinnertime hours. And they were concerned about bike riders going that way. That could, that, you know, that could have been.
But there's already a bike lane.
Yeah, there's a bike, yeah.
I know, I know, maybe, but the, you know, the, the civic may have expressed some concern about that. But I do like the alternate.
Considering there's six entrances, you know, losing one to something like this is.
Is not a big deal.
I like this one.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so we do have a resolution on for our next meeting to, you know, sign an agreement with you to move forward on this. Is the board okay with that, moving forward?
Yes.
Even though like we're changing this slightly, but we'll continue working.
Yeah, we'll confirm the details and update you.
Yeah, I'll co-sponsor with you.
Anytime would be great, yes, get the agreement going.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, no matter what, if we can get the agreement going, you know, we can start getting the materials that we need and getting everything in a row and then we can dial in the details of exactly what we wanna do as we find out. And maybe we'll talk to the Noiac Civic Council again and tell them what all of the board members said and kind of see if they are open to.
I'm confident they'll be happy.
Yeah, I think, the good news is they're in favor of it.
Yeah.
Everyone's kind of in favor of it, which is good, yeah.
You know, one of the things that I've heard is some folks who are driving, they don't wanna look at, you know, an exercise area. But, I mean, you know, the civic council looking at it, that's why I was thinking about a dune, you know, that it would kind of enclose it, but.
Yeah, and I think, I think you still have that opportunity no matter what. There's quite a dune grass restoration involved with all of them.
Right.
And we can, you know, can add some topography there.
Good. So the resolution is actually Cindy's, uh, was put on as lead sponsor and you and I already co-sponsored it. So.
If you put snow fence up, you can make your own dune.
Right, right.
I think you're gonna have to do that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do it, yeah. We got the, we got the right team.
What's the substance that's gonna be on the, over the, around the exercise area?
So it'll all be clean sand, yeah.
So it will be, you're gonna be walking in sand when you do pull-ups?
Yeah, yeah, that would be our, like aesthetically, I think it's the best, it's the most natural and we have done them in sand before. That'd be our recommendation, rather than bringing in a new material like wood chips or something like that.
We'll be fighting the sand forever because it comes off of the beach, you know, with the, with the winds and it builds up on that side, so.
Maintenance is on us, right, going, going.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know how much maintenance there's gonna actually be with the, with the equipment itself, but are you saying the sand from the, from the area?
From the beach in the wintertime when it's blowing thirty miles an hour.
Oh, yeah, from the beach.
Ultimately be litter and, and things like that, but, you know, we'll have to. Uh, I think the lifeguards would take care of it in season because I think this is something they'll want to use. They actually put their own up at some of the beaches in the summer, pull-up bars and things. So, um, that's something we could kind of test them with at least seasonally. But, yeah, there will be maintenance involved. I mean, there always is, you know, or somebody could vandalize something, you know, but I think that it's a, a good project.
I got just a quick thought. If, if you move this back like ten feet or eight feet and leave this sand right here. You make a small dune with a, with a snow fence. Yeah, okay, like that. That would catch the sand blowing what Tommy John was just saying.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be, it would be nestled in.
Yeah, cause that doesn't show it on here.
Yes, yeah, right.
So that would, that would capture the sand.
Yep.
So it wouldn't blow too much on it.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can mess with, yeah, the exact, the actual sighting of this, yeah.
Well, the, the surface is going to be sand.
Correct.
Right, so the indigenous sand, it's not, it's the.
Yeah, so sand blowing in it would not be an issue that actually.
I thought it was a hot sand.
Help it, yeah, no.
Bringing any sand in?
So we're gonna, we're gonna have to because you're going to be losing thirty-six hundred square feet of pavement. That's, that actually was just paved over sand, but Mezneski suggested that it's like, it's gonna be pretty gnarly sand, you know, it'd be better to just bring in the clean sand as well. Especially for the dune grass restoration, yeah.
That was actually dredge spoil that was put there in nineteen sixty after Hurricane Donna.
There you go, right.
Sixty-one, excuse me.
Yeah.
So we'll look into what's required for that too, cause it's gonna have to be like the same green sides and type that's just there, so.
Sounds great.
Drew, I wanna thank you and thank you.
Really appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for, you know, your work with this community. I know you're also working with the Village of Sag Harbor and just for the town board's edification. We have a property in the Village of Sag Harbor that we own with the village as well as Suffolk County, so there's three of us who owns it. Commonly known as Silly's Farm, and I know you're working with the Village of Sag Harbor to possibly do some trails in there. It's an eight-acre piece and, you know, just to, to make that a little bit more useful for the community. But that would be coming back to this board in some way, shape or form if the village wants to move forward.
Exactly.
Thank you for all your work, Drew.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Hello, the company's.
Kristin.
Tom, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kristin.
Thank you. Where does she go?
Oh.
Oh.
Don't say it.
Don't say it three times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's so nice, somebody wants to donate. All right, well, that brings us to the supervisors and town council members liaison updates. Let me start on this end today, Tom John.
Uh, last night I attended a Noiac Civic Council meeting and the main topic of discussion there were pedestrian enhancements and traffic calming measures that the, that the town is, is going to be installing there and getting, uh, public feedback. This is a sidewalk that would run along Noiac Road. Would be included, uh, included in it would be bumpouts as well as crosswalks, um, all designed to slow traffic down in the area. This, this was as per the request of the residents of Noiac. The average speed on that road is thirty-six miles an hour. So that means that half of the traffic is going faster than thirty-six miles an hour and it is, uh, the speed limit is currently thirty miles an hour in that area. So, you know, it gets a lot of traffic. It also gets thirteen thousand cars a day on average according to the state of New York. So it's a well-traveled road and we wanna keep, uh, the traffic flowing, but we also want it to calm down in this residential area too. Uh, there are also a number of parks. One of them is Long Beach that, uh, we were talking about here. And to make it possible to walk from the heavily populated areas of Noiac to Long Beach is imperative too. But it also takes into consideration some work on some of the other intersections there. You might be familiar with Stony Hill and Noiac Road. There is a farm stand there called Serene Green. It is a very dangerous, uh, intersection there and in order to pass pedestrians safely, there is a redesigned, uh, portion of that intersection that is included with the project too. So we presented that, Nick Jimenez and I, uh, presented that to the Noiac Civic Council again for input. Um, and they are supportive of the project. Of course, they have questions, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention as well.
So what's next on that? What's the next step?
Well, the next step is a kickoff meeting with the state of New York. As you know, we've received a two-point-nine plus million-dollar grant from the state of New York, so we are going to, uh, Nick is actually gonna be going off for a kickoff meeting with the state. They need information, uh, every step of the way and as we develop this, we're going to be, um, They need information, uh, every step of the way, and as we develop this, we're going to be, um, enfranchising, uh, the people of the community uh, in the final planning of, of the sidewalk and traffic calming measures there.
Because we just have a conceptual plan, not a detailed design, right?
Right, it's not the final design, we did, we've, we have already surveyed the, uh, the paved area in the right-of-way from Cove's Avenue East, there's actually a sidewalk that comes out of the Sag Harbor system that's in the town of Southampton, through the project area to Traut Pond, including the culvert of Traut Pond, which will be very useful, because we do need to change that culvert out.
The, are you saying that the plan includes the repairs to the culvert, Traut Pond?
The survey included.
Oh, the survey.
The culvert, because, you know, that's step one, you have to, you know, find out what our property is, or, you know, the right-of-way property, as well as where the pavement is. Um, but this is traffic calming and pedestrian enhancements. It's, you know, I, I know, uh, the highway superintendent is planning on paving New York Road, which is fantastic. And half of New York Road, it, right, we'll see in the budget, how that goes, I know it's, it's, it's a big ticket item.
But it won't interfere with the portion that's getting the sidewalks.
Exactly, um, one of these areas where traffic is, you know, really ramped up, and, uh, we believe that this will allow people to pass safely, or more safely, and also act to, you know, calm traffic down in the area while moving it. We've also met with the county, uh, regarding the circle at Long Beach, which is owned by the county. New York Road is the town's, the circle area, it's really an engineered intersection, that is county, uh, property. So, uh, we have been meeting with, uh, Commissioner Bartha, uh, Ann Welker has set this up with meetings with Commissioner Bar- Bartha, and members of, uh, DPW, um, Bill Hillman and Alex Frego are well aware of this, and, you know, they're, they're interested, I will say.
Good, 'cause that really needs to get looked at and adjusted.
You know, I look forward to, you know, uh, hearing what the highway superintendent has to say, I know he has ideas as well, so good.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Tommy John.
Glad it's moving forward. Well?
Yes, today, um, what was it, Wednesday, just for that. Myself and Marie and, and the committee met about the West Hampton Senior and Rec Center, and we got some plans, and we're gonna have another meeting next month, and hope to bring some rough drawings back to the board.
Yeah, it's very preliminary, right now, they were just going through to make sure that they could fit parking in and septic. So don't think, you know, we're not getting too far ahead of anything here, when, once we have some conceptual designs, we'll bring them in and, uh, and show the board.
And, but this is very exciting, this is what Bel Air looked, looked, excuse me, looked like at eight-thirty this morning.
Wow.
Beautiful. Boy, they really cleaned it out and...
Yes, and the next step is to... To, to, to get the bulkhead built in, to get some type of plans for a park.
Just very, you know, low-maintenance kind of park.
Yes, low maintenance, which we'll be doing in a near, very near future.
Well done.
You know, Jackie Finley talked, talked about this at the CPF Advisory Board yesterday morning, and they were very excited about what's going on there.
Yeah, I guess Jackie will help us with the bulkhead, or not the bulkhead, I don't know, will they be able to help some?
Yeah, there's some repairs at the bulkhead.
And some of the park, some of the stuff for the, uh, past park. She has COVID right now, so, um, I've been talking to her on the phone a little bit about it, so, once it gets better, we're gonna start up, start the next phase. Try to push it along.
Well, I'm sure this is gonna make the community very happy when they drive by.
Yes.
Thank you.
They won't recognize it.
I've just been working on the budget, 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 hope to present that very soon to everybody for your, uh, review and comments and input.
Is that it?
Yep, that's all for me.
This past weekend, I attended the San Gennaro Feast, um, in Hampton Bays, it was very well-attended, lots of people were there. Um, the Hampton Bays, um, American Legion was there as well.
Nice weather too.
It was beautiful weather, yeah, the, really, the community really lucked out. Also, I attended the anti-bias task force picnic, um, had a, had a little barbecue there, it was very nice. Um, there was some dancing, some, some music, it was, it was, it was very nice. Also, yesterday, we had our sixth, uh, uh, traffic mitigation and safety task force meeting. Um, it was very substantive, we had a very packed agenda, we had a couple of things that we wanted to review the previous meeting that we had to carry over, so we really had to pack the, the agenda. But one of the, two of the main, um, um, agenda items wa- were, um, the, uh, Logix cameras that, uh, you know, the police department, uh, helped coordinate to, to provide some information to the, uh, the task force about how the technology works. Um, Assemblyman Thiel was on the call as well to discuss how the, uh, enabling legislation would work, um, with, with the municipality, when you need the enabling legislation, when you don't need the enabling legislation, um, so that was very...
Correct.
Correct, um, so we, we, we learned a lot of information, um, and it was, it was, you know, I think, you, based on the information and the c- community input that we've been, uh, garnering since we started the task force, a lot of, a lot of the comments and concerns is, as you know, Maria, sitting on the task force with, with us, um, has to do with speed, you know, even though there's congestion issues, that's a big issue. But speed is also a really big issue, and, uh, we think that the cameras may be a good way to sort of help, uh, us deal with that issue, um...
I regret that I couldn't be there because of the conflict in my schedule, but why don't you tell everyone how they can wa- you know, find it, because I would like to watch it off, it's recorded, right?
Yeah, it's recorded, and it's on our, it's on the town website, and it, it, you know, if you also go to our CTV channel on YouTube, it's, it's, it's there as well. Um, we also had Janice Sheer, our director of planning, uh, present on the twenty-fifteen County Road Thirty-Nine Corridor Plan that was published. Because another ish, another, uh, com- uh, uh, ano- another concern that has been brought to the task force by the community, and by the way, the board has to do with land use and zoning on County Road Thirty-Nine, we know that the county is doing their study, but we as the town do have the authority to look at, uh, the land use and how that's, that works out. And, you know, uh, Janice really reviewed some of the main goals of the twenty-fifteen plan, and, um, some of the things that we have been able to achieve with the plan, and some of the things that we still have yet to, uh, 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 achieve, uh, that we haven't yet done. Two of those things that we wanna look at specifically are the consolidation of driveways, um, uh, curb cuts, and, uh, ensuring that there's cross-access, uh, so we can reduce curb cuts on Thirty-Nine, and also looking at signage as well. So, those are some of the things that we'll hopefully be, uh, re-examining at our next meeting. Um, we haven't had, we don't have a date yet, we're, we're still working that out, we're gonna talk to the task force members and see what works for everybody, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yesterday, I had a meeting, uh, with, um, Kim Lobby from HUGS, Jamie Bowden, and Tracy from our youth services, and we discussed the Addiction Recovery and Behavioral Health Committee, which was basically formed as the opioid task force. Um, it's kind of morphed through to what it is now, um, and we kind of hit a point with the committee where we found we were meeting every month, and it was pretty much the same agenda items, and without funding in a way, in a mechanism to really drive change, the committee really wasn't doing, you know, much in the way of changing community perspectives and outcomes, and... So to that end, we, um, are really going to, you know, yesterday, I guess we decided we're gonna take the next step forward to becoming a community coalition, which there'll be partners in, there's twelve different groups of individuals that will be involved in forming that coalition. So we are, we are in the very, very early stages of that, we hope to basically get our grant started in January for submission by April, but that's, that's what we're working towards with that committee now, because that will give us funding to then do programming to really hopefully change outcomes in the community. Um, to that end, if anybody is wondering why, uh, the Big Duck and the Town Cupola are purple this month, it is National Recovery Month, I'm just gonna read this about Recovery Month, Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions, such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. This observance reinforces the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can do recover. I also wanted to bring to everyone's attention that, um, HUGS is offering the third Wednesday of every month at six PM at HUGS on Mill Road in West Hampton Beach. They are doing free, uh, naloxone training, you don't have to register, you can just, if you find yourself in West Hampton Beach at six o'clock on the third Wednesday of any month, go in and, and they will be happy to train you and provide you with, with naloxone, so... Um, yeah, and that's really all I have for today.
Thank you. Well, if that's it, then I, um, we need to go into executive session, so I moved to go into executive session to discuss contracts and then close, and then we'll reconvene for a special town board meeting at one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.